Good afternoon, everyone. Today is November twenty ninth, twenty ninth. I think I'm thinking of Thanksgiving already. Today is November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty four. It's one thirty P. M. This is a City of Prescott City Council Study Session. We'll start off with roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protem Ken Telmee.
Here.
Councilwoman Truworth.
Here.
Councilman Gamboji.
I'm here.
Councilman Montoya.
I'm still here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
And Councilmember Ru Singh.
Here.
All are present.
We have one item on the study session today. A presentation and discussion regarding the City of Prescott Economic Development Strategic Plan.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, yes, I'll just do a.
Please lead it off.
I'll do a brief introduction. Just provide a little background for yourselves and for our citizens. Just a little background. In early two thousand and twenty four, the City of Prescott selected the firm Civic Solutions to create an economic development strategic plan for the City of Prescott. In late June, partners Stephen Pettigo and Laura Huffman conducted a series of meetings with council members individually, also with several roundtables with stakeholders from the community, and developed a steering committee to help review the documents as they went forward. In late October, Stephen and Laura returned with the draft plan and met again with council and established stakeholder steering committee. Following comments and directions, they are now presenting a final draft for the council and for the public and for the discussion today. I will turn it over to Stephen and Laura.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Council Members. It's good to be with you today. You have in your backup a copy of the full presentation. We've truncated it a little bit just because there's a lot of detail on implementation, but we'll just dive right in. So our agenda today will be to talk about the big picture. This is something that we talked about when we first visited with you all about what kind of economic development plan we were looking for here in Prescott, our engagement, what we did. We're then going to talk about discovery insights, and you may recall that we compared Prescott to a number of peer communities. And then we'll walk you through the strategic plan. All right, big picture. So for members of the public, this is something that we talked about when we first began working with this mayor and the Mayor Protem and City Council Members and the City Manager, which is how do we want to shape up our vision of economic development in Prescott? And so there are three different ways that we find that communities think about economic development. Economic Development one point O is generally all about company attraction. This is about identifying what kind of companies you want to come to your community and developing recruiting strategies around those, around those targets. What we often find in this kind of definition of economic development is it doesn't really include the community so much. It doesn't think about your small businesses. It doesn't think about your innovation, those innovators in your community, doesn't think about your workforce developers or your educators. And in your case, it doesn't think about the tremendous natural beauty that you find yourselves here in Prescott. So it ends up being a little bit anemic. Communities then usually move on to Economic Development two point O, which is when you start thinking about talent attraction. I'm sure you all have heard many times that economic development is workforce development and will be for the foreseeable future, so this enters into the conversation. Some quality of place, which you all know this, but we'll show you, you've, I mean, you knocked this one out of the park. Some business expansion and a limited downtown development. Where we really agreed with you all that it was time for for Prescott is really this advanced version of economic development. In this version, almost everyone in your community can see themselves. And when, when all of the community is involved in economic development, it makes alignment and progress a lot faster. And so when we think about economic development through, yes, recruiting diverse companies, but also focusing, it's not just any old company that you're looking for here. We're wanting to focus on a, on a few key goals. We'll talk about those here in a moment and really say yes to those things that you're the most interested in and not take up your limited time and resource on those things that are of less interest. It is about building a vibrant workforce. We talked to you all about how your demography sits today, how it compares to other peer communities, and making sure that you can attract and retain the workforce of your future is really, really important. Destination development, while you have done an unbelievable job, it's lovely just to fly in here and see the tremendous beauty that you have here. There are some opportunities for weekday events and things around that, so we'll talk to you about that. Catalyzing innovation, always important in a community, and we think is an important way to develop a feeder system for those target industries that you're seeking, and strengthening small business. You've got tremendous small businesses in town, and we want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to strengthen their presence in Prescott. So it is this three point O version that our strategic plan focuses on. All right, so starting from a place of strength. We do think that it is important when you're thinking about a five or longer year strategic plan for a community is to understand the assets first, and you've got plenty of them. First, you've got tons of place-based assets. You're a growing destination. You need to look no further than the landscape to see what you've got going in your favor. You've got a strong position within the regional and state economy, and your growth statistics show that. You've got trusted city leadership, a now not so new city manager, but a relatively new city manager and department staffing. You've got a clear understanding of Prescott's strengths and advantages. You yourselves have that understanding, but also we found that the stakeholders that we met with, and we met with lots and lots of stakeholders echoed many of the same sentiments that you expressed at the beginning of this work. Number five, you've made strategic investments in infrastructure and amenities to further economic development. Look no further than the airport, your green space initiatives and your land acquisitions. So you have made smart investments that are assets we can build on. And six, you've got a really, really committed community of business and education partners that are ready to line up with you and march forward. And we found that this sort of natural alignment about what it's time for now was, was easy to see, and it is the basis of this strategic plan. All right, let me just quickly run through the engagement, and then we'll dig right into the strategies. So as John said, we, we basically came in and assessed your assets and challenges. We met with a diverse group of stakeholders along the way. We met with folks from city. We conducted a comprehensive competitive assessment benchmarking you against eight peers as well as the state of Arizona and the United States. We put together a steering committee of diverse community and business representatives that guided this process from the beginning. We did a lot of one-on-one interviews with city council members, mayor, and also community members. We hosted a series of focused roundtable discussions with stakeholders from various sectors within the city. So we met with small businesses. We met with people from your tourism sector. We met with people from your education community. We conducted one-on-one interviews with key business and education leaders as well, and then engaged the city staff to make sure that we understood economic development through the lens of the city and also what your long-term needs and capacities were as a city. All right, so I'm going to let Stephen kick off the discovery insights.
Not as tall as you. So I'm going to talk a little bit through the discovery insights. If you guys have questions, feel free to jump in as we, as we walk through these. So first and foremost, just to give a, start with just a bit of a glance of the city to give you some, a foundation of where we're starting with in terms of an understanding. So about forty-six thousand residents. Interesting enough, you all know this, but the population growth in Prescott has actually expanded pretty, pretty significantly in the last five years, so about three times the U. S. average. So population growth has been pretty, pretty clipped. In addition to that, if we look out to the next sort of five years to two thousand and twenty-eight, we're projecting about a five and a half percent increase by two thousand and twenty-eight. So this is a community that can, that has grown and that is going to continue to grow. When we look at educational attainment levels, four in ten residents have a bachelor's degree. If you want to just benchmark that across the U. S., it's about three in ten residents. So it's a really educated community here. The however to that, though, is that as we've chatted with you all and as we walked through our workshop sessions when we were here in the summer, one of the challenges is, is that we look at residents that are sort of that twenty-five to forty-four years of age, what we call that prime talent pool. That, that talent pool is about forty-seven percent smaller than the U. S. average. So it's about half the U. S. average in terms of what that looks like. So that is something, as you'll see, as we walk through the plan, one of the things that we put an emphasis on is really thinking through, how do we, how do we approach talent development and talent attraction, and frankly, talent retention through, through your great educational partners? Median income, about sixty-six thousand, fifteen-minute commute, it's an easy, easy in and out. And then also tied to this challenge of our workforce, our workforce being small in terms of that prime age, our labor participation rate is pretty small. So that means the number of residents who are actually employed or actually out in the arena looking for a job is pretty significantly below the U. S. average, so sixty, about, the U. S. average would be about sixty-three and a half percent. So you, again, you'll see that we've put a lot of emphasis in this plan on this idea of how do we think about bolstering the next sort of generation of talent pool as it relates to growing the assets, particularly if we want to move beyond just a, a, a community that's, that it can be just a bit about destination development, thinking about how we're thinking about export economy-driven development as well. So what are those kind of opportunities that we have? So I, obviously, you know, the opportunity that really kind of stood out to us was this idea of kind of building on all the assets that you have here, both the destination assets, but really some of the great educational institutions that you have, as well as a lot of the opportunity that you see just across the state of Arizona. So we're really pushing into this idea of leading with business and leading with innovation to kind of set forth the way that we think about economic development. Again, some talent attraction retention work, but also thinking about what are those next generation of assets that are really going to help us grow and diversify the economy here in Prescott? The key here for us is diversification, right? Diversification, you're going to hear us talk a lot about that. Diversification leads to this idea of economic resiliency, which is something that's important. So what we'll do now to build off of this is talk a little bit about those insights and kind of what were the foundations of the things that we learned. So the next section that we'll walk through, we'll take the data that we've looked at through our peer communities, and it'll take the work that we've done through our data metrics, as well as all of our qualitative information, and provide you with a really clear set of what we think are, what are the lessons learned out of this work? I like to think about this as what's the talking points? How should we be all talking about Prescott and the challenges ahead and the opportunities going forward? So first and foremost, I think one of the things that was extremely clear to us, both with the conversations with y'all as well as the public, was the idea that as we think about the growth of Prescott going forward, it really has to be a balanced growth approach. And one of the things that makes us a great community is that we've got all the great assets in our downtown and our destination assets, our natural quality assets, but thinking about as we are growing, how do we do it in a way that's going to be really sustainable and resilient going forward? Partly because at the end of the day, you have growth that's coming out, and you have to be able to manage that growth effectively. So expansion is going to be very much about this idea of how do we protect what makes us unique in embracing the opportunity that we have as a community. Secondly, one of the things that we know is talent attraction and retention. As I said before, you know, we're challenged in the idea that we've got a, a bit of a smaller kind of prime labor force. Our labor participation rate is a bit, is, is, is a bit lower than the U. S. average. But on the flip side of that, we've got some really great institutions here, right? We've got great, great community college in town. We've got two institutions that are both academically strong in certain sectors that you'll see that we're going to tie to the plan as well. So thinking through this idea of how do we think about a talent, a talent retention and attraction and tie that to really to the growth industries going forward? In addition to that, also dealing with some of the issues as it relates to housing and childcare and those types of things, the wraparound services that become really important to talent attraction and retention, and you'll see that we've all made some, some notions of that in the plan as well. Thirdly is this idea of workforce housing. So, you know, today, as communities like you all, which are prime destinations, you cannot divorce your workforce challenges from your, from your housing challenges. And so one of the things that comes, really comes forward is that we've got to really think through, how do we start to address some of the affordability challenges, particularly as it relates to workforce housing? So this is housing as it relates to young professionals. It's housing that relates to folks that perhaps in our service sector, policemen, firemen. I know many of you are already thinking that U. S. council are thinking about these issues, but really thinking about how we tie workforce housing to, excuse me, our housing challenges to our workforce development issues and realizing that the two are very, very much linked, and it becomes, it really becomes an economic development challenge going forward for us. Fourthly, we heard a lot from the stakeholders that we had an opportunity to engage with around the idea of healthcare. In fact, the first person that Laura and I met when we came here was our cab driver from the airport who reminded us that we need, that need some better healthcare options here, hospitals, et cetera. It was the thing we heard over and over and over. Sometimes you ask drivers what they kind of think, and it's a great way to get a real flavor before people actually know who you are. And believe it or not, healthcare was the first thing that, that came up. That said, so there's a lot of opportunities to really kind of build on this, and you'll see that that's part of our, our suggestion in our plan going forward, is thinking through some healthcare cluster work. And that ties to a lot of the workforce development opportunities that are happening at Yoppa Pike College and elsewhere, particularly with their new bachelor's degree in nursing. But really thinking through, what does that ecosystem look like? And the really great thing for y'all is like, there's some good examples in Arizona that have done this, right? Just up the road a bit, Scottsdale's done a lot around this about attracting and retaining a really great anchor institution in the Mayo Clinic and kind of building kind of world-class healthcare around that. So you'll see that that's actually one of our recommendations. We spent a lot of, a bit, a bit of a time in the plan talking about that particularly. The thing that I think is super exciting and unique about who y'all are is the idea that you've got, obviously, you all as a community, particularly the city, has made big investments in the regional airport. You've got Embry-Riddle, which is their, their kind of bread and butter is kind of within aviation, not to mention they, as an institution, have made a lot of investments in this idea around cybersecurity. And if we look and map out what industries of the future look at, look like, many of those industries really align with the sector. And so you'll see that part of our plan is also thinking through, how do you leverage all those assets you've made around aviation and cybersecurity as a way to think about, again, what are those industries that can allow us to think about diversification and think about resiliency and really align with what are our strengths, particularly some of our educational strengths here? So you'll see that we've, we've made a real play into this place, into the cyber and aviation space, and we'll talk more about that as we get to the plan. Sustainable development. So one of the things, if you all remember the question we ask a lot of y'all, I think it was a question we ask every person that we met with, we ask you all in our workshop as well as our stakeholders, was what, what are the things that we can say no to instantly, right? What are the things that we say no to? And the thing that came over and over to you all that mentioned to us is just industries that are going to be kind of heavy on natural resources, particularly water, was something that we wanted to, to stay away from. And so one of the things that you'll see in the plan is we've made a real concerted effort to think about how we play in this sustainable economic development space and think through a set of industries and a set of, a set of growth, growth opportunities that align with the idea that Prescott has to think through how it really kind of thinks about its issues as it relates to water and other things. And we've got some, got a creative idea that we'll get to as we get to the plan, or particularly around chip manufacturing and still how we can, how, even though the state, the state is playing a big role in there, how as we as a community can also play in that space as well. Workforce development, again, thinking through as we build out economic, our economic development plan and our industries, the question is, is what are those connections back to workforce development, and how do we do that? Not just with our community college system, but also with our high school programs and our CTE programs. So you'll see that we're putting a big emphasis on if we're building these industry sectors and really focusing on these, how do we go back and connect the workforce development opportunities to those, ensuring that we're creating those opportunities, right? We don't want to create a set of industries that where we have to attract a bunch of new residents. What we want to do is create a set of industries that our current residents and our current workforce that we have can fill those jobs and make that connection. So we're spending a lot, you'll see in the plan, there's a lot of this, a lot of discussion and thinking about how do we connect job creation to workforce development and ensuring that the two are matched together. Retail development, retail is obviously important part for, for you all. It's important for, for lots of reasons. One, partly because of our destination development, diversity retail creates a great experience. But more importantly, retail is important for you all because it keeps the lights on, so to speak. It's how we pay the bills. So thinking through some diversity as it relates to retail, both, both small downtown retail, but also retail as it relates to our kind of big box opportunities, and we'll talk more about that as we get to the plan. But knowing that retail was a focus and important part for us is something to, to consider as we go forward. Midweek tourism, again, lots of opportunities as it relates to leisure tourism and destination tourism, but the question is, how do we expand? How do we take the, take the valleys out of the week, so to speak, as it relates to tourism? So focusing on midweek tourism, particularly for business tourism, and thinking through how do we connect your economic development needs with your tourism destination assets and marrying those two together? And you'll see that we've got some opportunities and thoughts on how to do that. And then finally, I think the thing that is important to remember as we go through this plan is that as we build out the plan, obviously, the internal capacity and the resources that are necessary to grow the plan is, it's going to be important. And you'll see in our plan and the action plan, we've outlined what we think those resources are and how to move those forward. So with that, I think I'll stop and let you ask some questions, and then we'll march through the plan if you have questions about the assessment work that we've done. What's that? Perfect. Shall we go through the plan? Let's do the plan. I'll let Laura talk, where you don't have to hear, keep hearing me go on and on. Laura.
Please proceed.
All right, okay. So elements of the strategy, this'll, I'm just going to sort of walk you through the formats that you can follow along. One, we want to start with a vision. It's always important to know what you, what, how, look, in a community that's growing like you're growing, you have choices, and this is all about how do you want to grow? How can you grow in a way that you look back ten years from now, and every member of this community feels like they were a part of it, and it still feels like Prescott, Arizona? It'll be bigger, but it can still feel like the special place that caused you all to choose, to choose Prescott. Desired outcomes, strategies, how are we going to activate and measure impact, and of course, actions? And, and we even, our strategic plan even gets down to measurement exercises. We know that many of you come from business backgrounds. You emphasized in our meetings with you early on, you want to be able to measure against goals and progress so that you can demonstrate to the citizens that this is on track and producing results. So Prescott, where business innovation, business and innovation leave the usual behind for a bold tomorrow. One of the things that we like to say is that economic development, while there is, you know, it's science and art, and the storytelling is important in economic development, how you choose to become known, how you choose to sort of modify and change the reputation that Prescott has and to build on what you, your assets into the future, it matters. And so when you talk about business and innovation, leaving the usual behind for a bold tomorrow, even that sends a signal. You are a vibrant destination where breaking away from the ordinary meets bold opportunities for tomorrow, welcoming thinkers, innovative businesses, and talented residents to shape a dynamic future. And our experience in meeting with you all and, and in the stakeholder groups is you all kind of reflect this. There's, there's just sort of a courageousness about this vision you have. You're going to see, let's see here, five goals. So here are the big buckets. One is talent for tomorrow, developing a skilled workforce that embraces opportunities for tomorrow. The second one is investments for tomorrow, building an innovative economy that attracts bold investments for the future. Entrepreneurship is the third area, empowering local businesses and entrepreneurs to grow and scale for tomorrow's opportunities. Placemaking, we will, we will promote and elevate Prescott's quality of place and unique identity to shape the future. And finally, partnerships, investing in Prescott's economic development ecosystem and building strong partnerships for sustainable growth. Goal one, talent for tomorrow. So here you're going to see four strategies. The first is to establish sector partnerships between local colleges and target innovation sectors. So think about a sector partnership as, think about healthcare as a sector, and a sector partnership is a partnership in which you gather together all of your major players, your educators, your existing businesses, your economic development assets and resources, and you work together as a sector team. This is done very frequently in the world of workforce development. It is done sometimes in the world of economic development. What, what we're suggesting you do is you marry both those worlds together. So it's not just the workforce people thinking about their sectors or just the economic developers thinking about their sectors. I can tell you, there's a lot of power in doing it this way. It's efficient, and it'll also just get you to outcomes a lot faster. Invest in workforce housing, options that support young professionals, service workers, middle-income families. These are your firefighters, your, your police officers, your EMS folks, making sure that they're, that, as you work to build an economy where you can hire local, this is building the housing so people can also live local. Engage and align Prescott High School's CTE programs for local industry needs. There's a lot going on in the, in your school district and making sure that they get to be incorporated in that education picture. It's not just your, it's not just Embry-Riddle and the colleges. It's making sure that the school system that's training your young people is doing that in conjunction with your economy, and we say that because you want to keep your young people. And this is a great way to build them into that economic development picture. And then launching a mentorship marketplace connecting retirees with young professionals. We, we see the retirement community here as an asset. We got all sorts of good ideas, many from you on the council, about how people who are retired from professionals' careers could be angel investors, could be part of an accelerator, could be part of an incubator, could be part of mentoring. And so we want to be sure and recognize that you've got, you've got a real brain resource here in Prescott, Arizona, because you've got people that are retired from professional careers, and there is a way to tap into that, that connects your older community with your younger community, we think, in a really creative way. We're going to walk you through, on strategy one, we're going to walk you through the full way the report is written, so you're going to see these detailed actions. In the, in the next five, we will just stay at that higher level, but we wanted the community that's watching or in the room with us today to see that there are action steps associated with all of this. So for strategy one point one, which is the sector partnership, the action items there are to engage with the consulting team to outline the sector engagement frameworks, plan working sessions, and identify initial sector meetings. Formalize those partnerships with local colleges and targeted innovation sector representatives and convene quarterly working sessions. These work sessions are not just to give status updates. This is going to help you identify, what are those one or two key businesses that we could recruit into this sector that would really, really help build this out for our community? What are we missing? So it is both an assets analysis and a gaps analysis. That group, I promise you, will also keep you super honest as to whether or not they are receiving the workforce, the results of workforce development efforts that they need to see in order to build their business. It's a very, very tight connection there. One of the actions is to collect, collect data on sector requirements by conducting surveys and holding sector. sector requirements by conducting surveys and holding sector-specific meetings. Based on the needs identified, develop a list of prioritized actions. It might be workforce, it might be targeted recruitment, it might be connections to other communities. It might be, there might be some international work that needs to be done, but we want to understand from those key sectors, what do we need to build this sector out and make this resilient into the future? And then execute the defined action steps in partnership with colleges and with continuous monitoring adjustments as needed. Always, always, always measure for outcomes, and that gets us to measuring impact. Sector partnerships, so here are the things that we would look to, that in a year from now, you all as a city council can come back and look at these steps to see, did we deliver on the plan that we approved? First, set up those sector partnerships. Make sure that educational attainment is the second one, monitoring the city's educational attainment levels, housing starts, tracking the number of housing starts and building permits issued in the city, completed training degrees and CTE programs. This is kind of where the rubber hits the road. How many people are you enrolling into those training and educational programs? And then the truest way to track the success of those programs is job-related placements from that training. In other words, if I train as an accountant and I get a job as a carpenter, that's not a training-related job placement. If I train as an accountant and I end up in a job as an accountant, then that's a training-related job placement, and you want to make sure that you're tracking those, because it's a good cross-check on the educational system. And then mentorship participants. Again, we really see a lot of hope in this strategy, and making sure that you've enrolled as many of your retirees as possible, and connected people to your young professionals so that they're getting the benefit of that wisdom. All right, I'll do this. Yeah, let's stop there, and we'll go goal by goal.
So one of the things I hope you can see is that, one of the things we did with the plan, sorry about that. One of the things that we did with the plan, I think you'll see, is that we've given you a really detailed playbook, right? So the idea that you guys tasked us with the idea of building a strategic plan, which we did, but in addition to that, we've outlined a really clear playbook. So these action items and a performance metric that we've given to the city staff has, here's how we think about them in terms of timing, and here's how we think about partners and metrics tied with them as well. So the idea is that, once the consultants are gone and you've got the plan, you actually have a playbook that you can actually execute on. And so that's the level of detail that I hope you see in the plan, and we won't spend a lot of time on that today, but that's in the full report. Questions? Are we that good? Should we just keep going? Please.
I got some questions from the first part of your presentation, but I think it was important for everybody to take a breath, so I'll hold them till later.
Okay.
Over on strategy 1.1, on your page 20, or no, excuse me, on strategy 1.2, on your page 30. This came up earlier in council meetings, and your first action is to develop an RFP and hire a consulting team to assess Prescott's housing system. Councilman Montoya and I, and City Manager Dallin Kimball, just returned from the National League of Cities.
Yep, great. It's a great conference.
And the one thing we learned is, many of the challenges the other cities have is are same as the challenges that we have. But I have yet to see anything come out of any consultant, any government agency, that adequately addresses the topic of workforce housing. So I just present a caution. Since I haven't seen a solution, I don't know that one exists. I don't know that that's a panacea for, we need to solve workforce housing. I don't know that there's a solution out there, and so, it's kind of a panacea to say, let's turn this over to a consultant, he'll fix it, because I don't think they will.
Yeah, and so I think if you're referring to, I think you're referring to the housing strategy. One of the things that we outlined as kind of a step was, going through and doing an assessment about what are your housing needs. And so, that is, that is a recommendation in the plan. It's to think through, just as you've hired a team to come in and think about your economic assets, and just as you will hire a team to come in and think about your retail assets, there are real expert, there's real expertise out there on the street where there are firms that, that's all they do is specialize in housing challenges, the housing challenges of communities. And so one of the things that we're recommending is to go out and think through, just as you've done that kind of discovery set around, what are economic development opportunities? We should do the same thing as it relates to our housing. What do we think our housing needs will be now? What do we think will be in the future? How's our community demographics going to change? How does that map up with conversations that you all, that you all, as a governing body, is having about land use, as relate to some of the comments that the public would have? And so, all we're saying is that there is, I believe, truly believe this, that there is real value in having someone that can act as an honest broker, and a lot of times that is a consultant, that can act as an honest broker, and actually do that assessment and lead the community through this conversation about, what do we need, what do we need to really service and think through our housing challenges that relates to, that we're facing here? So that's the recommendation in the plan.
Further comment. When we drove from Daytona over to Tampa, I got the guys to stop and visit an old friend of mine, who I haven't seen in 13 years. He lives in a development called The Villages. Have you ever heard of The Villages?
I have heard of The Villages.
Well, that's not workforce housing, but there's a message there. The house that he lives in is the same size of houses on West Ridge here in Prescott. It has bigger lots, he's got a pool, he's got a view of a lake, and instead of spending three-quarters to a million dollars for a house, the houses are $350,000. So, the message there is, you know, if you kind of get demand and supply somewhere close to one another, good things happen.
Exactly. So, one of the things that I think a good housing assessment would do for you, as a community, not telling you to spend more money, but think through, having someone that can actually come in and help you think that through, like what does, what does the future demand look like in the community? What is the opportunity that we have as it relates to our land use? And can you have someone help you walk through that process of just exactly what you've done with the economic development strategy, about how you marry the two together? I don't think that, I don't think a consultant solves a problem for you, but I do think that they will bring in a really good understanding of how to lead those conversations with you as a governing body, as well as the public, as well as matching that with good research and data to understand, what do we believe the supply and demand needs will be in the future? Housing is one of, I mean, housing is the most challenging, one of the most challenging issues that communities face now. It is the issue of our time, and I think just having an opportunity to walk through that process and do that process transparently with a good advisor, to be able to have that data, it's, in my mind, it's really well worth the funds. I'll let Laura add addition.
Mayor Protem. That I was going to make about that is, I do think it's really helpful in a community conversation to make sure that you guys get really clear on what you control and what you don't control. I think a lot of times when the conversation about housing comes up, people think that you all are in control of all aspects of all costs of housing, and you're just not. You don't control the cost of goods and services, you don't control interest rates. What you do control is your building codes. You do control, you do have control over, you know, the processes that it takes to pull permits and to get to a built product. And I think sorting through those levers that you do actually have some control over, and those that you don't, can be a really healthy community conversation. I know a lot of people that were at NLC last week, and how prominent that conversation featured. And I think the communities that really start that conversation, one, by connecting it to something, and the fact that, you know, we're talking about connecting it to workforce, which connects to your economic development goals, that's important, because when people talk about affordability, they often talk about the costs of living in a community. You are connecting that conversation to the income associated with living in this community, and those are the jobs that you offer. But I also think that communities quickly have to sort of stake out what it is that they are in control of, and what, and work on those things, and then those things that you're not in control of, you're not in control of them.
Mayor Protem can tell me.
Well, the good news is, we're doing that. So, our workforce housing committee applied for and received a grant, and we will be hiring a consultant firm real soon to be able to help us with all of those needs that you talked about. Another interesting thing that has happened, and I know it's happened in Florida also, I have a niece and nephew that have lived there for quite some time, the private sector is stepping up. I think it takes a while to get geared into that, because there is a definition of workforce housing, and until just recently, we really haven't been able to put that message out, what the definition of workforce housing is, because there were a lot of studies that needed to happen in terms of our community, because we are a retirement community, and we would like to have that other sector grow. So recognizing the income levels here that are exclusive to Prescott, and what is considered affordable here. Ted's talking about a house in Florida, in a community, in a retirement community, that's $350,000 there, that would probably be 750 to 900 here. It's supply and demand. So, we do have a summary that comes out to us through community development, and I don't see Chelsea here today. And if you look at the most recent one, you can see that the private sector is stepping up, looking how they can, looking into how they can supply us with a more reasonably priced product that will begin to satisfy that need. So, good news. Sorry Ted, I guess I didn't tell you that. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing, as I was doing the pre-reading for this, and really thinking through your words, and I love some of your words, bold and things like that, I was like, yes. But the word stakeholder, we have a lot of people in this community with opinions, but stakeholder for me took it to another level, and I didn't know if I was thinking about it the same way you were thinking about it. I was thinking about, you know, we can sit here and study for two more years, or you can have people who have skin in the game, people who are hurting because their businesses can't grow, because they can't get the workforce, or people who are losing opportunities because they don't have the workforce. And so for me, that's where I was starting to think about stakeholders, as people who really do have skin in the game, and not just opinions, because investments are going to be needed. That's how I think. What were you thinking about with those choice of words?
I think you're spot on. In particular, when you're talking about those sector partnerships, you're talking, you know, I'll give you an example of one, in a community where we're working, where there's a tremendous amount of infrastructure investment. And so in that particular instance, the stakeholder group is comprised of project sponsor, who's, you know, who's building, who's making the airport investment, who's building the roads. Those are usually city, county, et cetera, state. The job creators, those are the people that are bidding on the projects, that have to have the workforce behind it in order to build those projects on time. And the third one is the training community. So it'll generally be that, some version of that three-legged stool, but because those sector partnerships are really trying to understand the strength, you know, the swat, the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, what don't we have that we need, yes, it has to be people that have knowledge and stake in the game.
Shall we keep going? Did you want to ask your questions about the previous part first, or should we just keep going? Okay, we'll keep going. Okay, onward, my friends. We're going to talk about goal two now, which is build an innovative economy that attracts bold investments for the future. So I really kind of think about this goal as our part of the plan, that's really thinking about kind of the future of what's going to make up the economy here in Prescott. So first and foremost, build an aviation and cyberspace district in North Prescott. We're very specific in this, partly because you all have the airport, and we can be place-based in our approach here. And one of the great things around economic development is that you can take sort of regional, sort of city and regional-wide ideas, but you can also apply those to a really kind of strategic area of, area of focus. And so we're offering and sort of suggesting that that happens around the airport and the investments that Embra Riddi is making. Second, building out a cutting-edge medical services hub that kind of, that meets the local needs and attracts regional demand. So obviously, the idea of building out a medical service cluster that kind of can become focused on the local needs, but also perhaps there's an expertise that comes out of this, that becomes sort of a really focal point for opportunities for visitors that would be coming from outside of the region into Prescott, to take advantage of those services. A lot of times, folks think of healthcare as just local services, and what we're trying to suggest to you is that, yes, you want to have a local focus, but if we can think about it as an export service, right, meaning people that come around from outside the region, then it becomes a real growth opportunity, right? If you think about it in terms of, in terms of healthcare. 2.3 is strengthening Prescott's light manufacturing role and supplying key machinery for Arizona's growing chipping and semiconductor industries. So one of the things that we heard from many of you was the idea that as we think about our economic development efforts, we want them to be really centered on being sustainable, not overly, resource heavily particularly for water. On the flip side of that, I think you all know that the state of Arizona has made a big, big play in chips manufacturing, and it's one of the largest recipients of chip, the chip sack dollars in the country, and those dollars aren't going away. Those dollars are flowing pretty significantly. And Arizona's been, Arizona and Texas and other places have been real winners in that battle. And so one of the things that came up in our conversations, particularly with some of your educational partners at Yoppa Pike College, was the idea that we are already doing some light manufacturing in this space around machinery. We already have companies, some companies that are located here, as well as the educational training programs that can connect to those folks. So for us as a region, we don't want to be left out of the party, so to speak, right? If Arizona's making a big play as chips, how do we, how do we participate in that semiconductor sector? And part of that idea is thinking through, what is that machinery and skilled, particularly around light manufacturing, that we, really, really important to that sector going forward? And so there's a real kind of area of focus and expertise, thinking about that piece. Fourthly, thinking about Prescott as a destination for midweek tourism and corporate retreats and professional events. This is the idea of like, how do you marry destination development and economic development together to really move that forward? And then finally, getting to the idea that as we think about economic development, there's a bunch of, there's obviously, we need to have the right tools and the toolkit, so to speak. So what are the right types of policies? What are the types of incentives? Land use strategies and toolkit that's really necessary for growing us forward? And I know the city manager, and John and team are starting to think about what that looks like in terms of those policies and toolkits. And so, that in itself is really important to thinking through, how do we position our city on a go-forward basis to really attract and build out these sectors? So I'll stop there and ask if there's questions.
Councilman Gamborgi.
I've got a question.
Please.
Once upon a time, back when the earth cooled, the owner of Waters Nurseries, Ken Lane, came to me and said, you know what the problem is in Prescott? And I said, no, I don't. He said, we don't have enough good doctors. And he said, do you know why we don't have enough good doctors? I said, no. He said, because the schools are bad and they don't want to send their kids there. You know why the schools are bad? So I'm thinking, strike three, the umpire says. I say, no. And he says, because we can't afford for teachers to live here. That's why we need workforce housing. Many, I was going to save this to the end, but I'll say it now.
Sure.
You did a lot of work on this, and it's really unfair to hear this in our presentation. I mean, because this, I think deserves a lot of dialogue, a lot of discussion. Many times on council, I've said that the problems facing Prescott are not bivariate. It's not Y is some function of X. It's a multivariate. So this thing about getting medical services doesn't happen if we don't get healthcare workers and teachers able to live in the city. We always focus on police and fire, and that's legitimate. But teachers and healthcare workers is also an area where we need to focus. So, when I see this, I try to integrate them in my mind. You can't get one without the other.
We agree.
I mean, I think that's beautifully said. I think that what you're describing is that model of economic development that does pull all of the different pieces of the community in together, and they are interrelated. And one of the beauties about thinking of them as, I remember you saying that in the council work session, is, you're putting them all on the table at the same time, so you can see how they interact, so you can see how, you know, a decision in one arena is going to, you know, be the first domino that starts to affect other arenas. That's the whole reason to connect workforce development and housing and other policymaking to economic development priorities, because there are interrelationships that exist whether or not, you know, whether or not you pull them forward, and show people how the policymaking fits in, even, even to the extent, frankly, of how you think about your incentives, and those things that you're going to use your assets in order to do some of the harder stuff, right? Not everything is going to be easy. And being able to look at the community and talk about, here's what we're doing, here's why we're doing it, and here's the performance that we're going to get against this investment. I think all of those things are really important, and I think it's, I love that you said that, because it just, it tells you why just looking at new business recruitment doesn't do justice to what's at stake in a community when you're talking about economic development.
I'll say. Other questions? Shall we keep going? Okay, let's do it. Do you want to go to us?
Sure. All right. Goal three, entrepreneurship for tomorrow. So this is all about empowering your local business and entrepreneurs to grow and scale for tomorrow's opportunities. This is creative stuff that's happening in your community. This is creative stuff that's happening in your community. So Strategy 3.1, establish a business retention and expansion, this is called BRE in the economic development world, initiative to support local businesses and guide policy development. What does this mean? It means get out there. And your team is already doing that, but making sure that you are listening to your existing businesses. There's a wealth of knowledge out there. And when you go sit with those local businesses and hear what, what's going well for them, what could be tweaked, what their plans are for growth, that's a really important part of economic development. And, and I think Stephen would agree with this. Business retention is easy to say. A lot of people don't do it. A lot of people talk about meeting with their local businesses. A lot of people talk about local business being the backbone. Not that many people get in front of local businesses and really have those conversations with them. Strategy 3.2, develop a city-supported concierge service that connects small businesses with technical, educational and navigational support. I know this is not going to come as a surprise to you, but what we heard from your entrepreneur, I think you were in one of those meetings, council member, what they're good at is, is innovating. What they're not good at is city processes, and they don't want to get good at it. They just want help. And so the message here is if, if you will just help us move through these processes that are not intuitive, so that we can stay focused on that innovation, it would make a world of difference. And our point of view on that is, it's, it's, there's a really high return on that investment. 3.3, promote and market Prescott's small business and unique city experience to boost local spending and attract visitors. This has a lot to do with connecting the things. We heard from your local, your local restaurants, but also your arts community that isn't all downtown. If they were cross-promoting, so that if you walked into one business downtown, you'd learn about everything else that's in Prescott that you could do to spend a day here. And then celebrate, 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 celebrate your business and entrepreneurs. This, you know, in today's world, this has a lot to do with storytelling on social media. We've watched communities get really committed to this really fast, and it, and it catches on fire when people can see themselves on your social media post and, in your storytelling. So making sure that you are giving credit to those that are succeeding, but also celebrating. Yes?
Thank you, Mayor. So this goal, unsurprisingly probably, was the one that jumped out to me the most, in part because I think Eric and I are two of the, the only two small business owners that sit on this council right now. And I, and I really liked what you said about the idea that small business owners don't want to get good at city processes. I think it's, it reminds me of the adage that I think was Ronald Reagan, you know, the worst words you can hear is, I'm from the government, I'm here to help. And so I think of, our mission sometimes has to be this idea of getting out of the way of small business and entrepreneurs, like giving them the space to succeed. It doesn't mean we have to do the work for them. I think a lot of very successful entrepreneurs in this community don't want the city involved in their life at all, if they can help it. But I think a lot of it is getting out of the way. Certainly, when there's successful, you know, components to that, it's, I want to cheer it on and celebrate it too. But I think part of it is getting out of the way. So I appreciate it that you kind of drove that point home.
All right. Goal Four.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question when it came to the Strategy 3.2 with small businesses. I know we have a good program with small business help out of Yoppa Pie College. As you were doing your assessment, you know, rather than us adding more resources to do a concierge service, was there any discussion on what they might be able to do to be employed to, to help us in this regard? If, if it's bureaucratic stuff that they need to deal with? Or, or how did, how did Yoppa Pie College and that group come, come up at all?
So, so that group, that group was pretty engaged. We talked a lot about the, the services that they are providing to small businesses around a lot of the technical. I think what we're suggesting is, is not that you recreate those services, but you're able to go out and kind of help connect the dots for that. And it doesn't necessarily need to be, maybe, it doesn't necessarily maybe need to be someone on, on city staff. It could be done through a partner type of, partner type of role and arrangement. But the idea, I think of, I think the biggest thing we heard out of this over and over and over is that if I'm a new business owner, and are a business owner looking to expand in the city of Prescott, where do I start? And how do I get my, how do I get departments across the city to talk to each other, right? Permitting to talk to planning, et cetera, et cetera, depending on however, however the city is, is organized, economic development, et cetera. So could there at least be someone embedded within the city that's an advocate? That is that one-stop shop of a person that acts as, okay, Stephen, you're coming to start a business, you've got to talk to John, you've got to talk to Betty in permitting, and you should go talk to the person in Yoppa Pie College that can help you with, help you with that small, that, that business planning operations. I think just having someone that could all, think about it as the quarterback, so to speak, that, that was something that we heard over and over and over. And I will say, we've actually seen communities actually do this and do it pretty successfully. We just did some work in Buta, Texas. Buta has made an arrangement where they've actually just set up someone that is actually acting as the concierge service for businesses and developers that are coming in to say, here's how you would proceed through the, through the process, here's how you, here's how you begin. They kind of follow, almost think about them as following, following along with the entrepreneur through the process, just to get through the, the hurdles, so to speak. And it's been really, really effective, actually.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. I'd just like to expand on Councilman Montoya's comment. We also have Councilwoman Connie Cantalme. She's had a very successful contracting, design, build company for, what, 30 years, 40 years? And also myself, we had a very thriving, successful Prescott surgical clinic, a general surgery clinic that served the community here for 30 years and was very instrumental in raising the bar as far as the medical services here. So I just wanted to not sell ourselves short. Thank you.
One other comment about 3.2 is that, as you all know, we did some work with the Chamber around some of the work that they're doing. The Chamber here is also thinking about this navigation standpoint as well. So this could be a great opportunity for both the public and private initiative, whereas maybe you all are handling all of the kind of nuts and bolts of how to get through city processes. And then there's a relation, a really strong relationship that happens with the Chamber that's helping them through capital and small business and planning and marketing and all those types of things. That EDC example that I was suggesting earlier through Buta is actually, is that, is where it's a position that is kind of semi-quasi, sits between both organizations, both the place in government as well as the non, the EDC organization that kind of helps them, helps small businesses navigate the city processes, but also acquire all the resources that are necessary to grow and expand. Just a, just an idea of how to do it. There's some, some really good innovative examples out there on how to, how to move that forward. Shall we keep going?
Mayor Protem Cantalme.
You know, I wanted to make a comment too. I think I was on the last economic development committee that the city of Prescott had. And one of the things that we were talking about developing, just going back to your point, and Councilman Montoya is, we actually have several resources here in the city. But when you have a young, I used to speak at the women in business conventions down in Phoenix about starting businesses. And one of the things that we recognized here in Prescott is we need, for the economic development department now, we need some kind of a comprehensive, maybe a booklet that says, because we have SCORE. We have an incubator, who, actually Dr. John Haas is right there. So we have the resources, but if you're young, you can imagine, you're young, you've got a great idea. And as I learned in college many years ago about small businesses, you know, 80% fail because they don't know, they may know the product that they want to put out there, but they don't know about all the paperwork, the FICO, the taxes, the, all the other stuff. That's the part they need the help with. But we do have it here. I think consolidating is our problem. We need to consolidate that in one place and hand it out to these young people that want to start these businesses, because that's the daunting part of it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Great comment. Shall we keep going? Okay. So move on to Goal Four. So Goal Four is really around the idea of placemaking and how do we think about the place elements here in Prescott? So promoting and elevating quality of place, and also being really reflective on what our identity is. So Goal 4.1, already in action, but we included it here to be reflective of the work that's already in play, is developing a retail study, and then out of that retail study, building out a retail strategy, understanding what are the retail needs that are important. And for a community like you all that are, that's highly dependent on sales tax, that is a hugely critical, important issue. And it's something that you got, that we, that we need to be activating on now, definitely for the future. 4.2 is thinking about, how do you take all the great placemaking efforts that you've done in downtown and communicate and do in other parts of the city? And there's a lot of efforts. This is the idea of like, how do you create and curate experiences throughout other parts of the city? And there are lots of low-cost and low kind of resource ways to do that. 4.3 is activating all the recreational assets that you've done, particularly as you guys have made big efforts and investments around parks, promoting that, connecting that back to our tourism development work, executing on the tourism strategic plan. So one of the things I think you'll notice in this plan is that we tried to marry the destination plan, the tourism strategic plan, and the economic development plan and put them together. And we've, we've created some synergies there. And then finally, really thinking through like, what's our brand platform and how do we communicate who we are for both economic development and visitors alike? So you've got a really, really good, strong brand platform as it relates to your tourism, tourism platform. The other, the question now is, could we even think about how we get creative and leverage that same brand platform to talk about how we are a great place to live, work and play? And thinking more comprehensively about the way that we think about our economic development marketing. More and more communities, this is best practice. It is not best practice to have church and state in terms of, here's what we do for tourism, and here's what we do for economic development. More and more communities are moving to this idea of how do we have a consistent message as it relates to both destination marketing as well as economic development marketing? And that's something that we're encouraging you all to think through. And I know that Christina and team are already starting to give some thoughts to that work as well. I'll go ahead and hit Goal Five, and then we'll, we'll grab these two together if that, if that works, because they're, they're pretty short. Goal Five is really thinking about partnership. So first and foremost, continuing to invest in the capacity of the resources that are needed to do this. This is a big plan. How do we meet the needs to really act on, on that plan? 5.2 is encouraging us to get in the game as it relates to regional and state economic development. So the Arizona Department of Commerce does really great economic development. Y'all just have to show up and be a part of the plan, right? And let them know that you're here to play. So getting into that concerted effort of like, what that RFI process happens. And I know John and team are doing that, but being really clear about that RFI process and how we respond to that. RFI is the request for information that comes out for communities. We start to position yourselves. Having an economic development plan will now communicate that. 5.3 is thinking through, how do, what are those things that we can think about communicating and engaging with our, our peer communities? And some of that is, is a lot of the big things that happen, you know, infrastructure investment, transportation, those types of things, and being a partner as it relates to that. So we wanted to make sure that was included in this work. And then 5.4, you know, as we, as we are thinking through and going through this plan and looking to the future, no other time have we lived to a time where we're starting, where we have seen major, major investments in terms of economic development, and both from the state and the federal agencies as it relates to economic development. And even with the changing of administration in Washington, there's lots of folks that will, that believe that this will continue to be a really forefront at the issue. And so how do we think about really working with different partners, not just for the city, but as well as our, you know, nonprofit community, our association community here, to think about what are those grant opportunities that we can really be focusing on as growth opportunities going forward? Particularly as it relates for things that maybe will be coming down the pipe from the Economic Development Administration and others. So those are the, those, I think that, that captures all of Goal Five. And we're open to taking questions about, you know, any of the plan, Goal Four, Goal Five reactions that you may have that we can help, questions that we can help resolve.
Well, first of all, I thank you for all the analysis work and strategic recommendations you've made. But I think the more we listen to this, the key factor here is affordable housing. Almost every single segment of recommendation is going to be based upon finding a workforce, a labor participation rate that allows workers to be available to work in every one of these segments. Whether it's healthcare, and we're talking about nurses or nurse practitioners, or physician assistants, all of which need to have an affordable place to live. And I think the last resale number I saw in Prescott was around $700,000 per resale home. And for new homes, we're in the five to 600,000 range. It's just not accessible to hourly workers. And, you know, you could focus and try to attract more businesses to relocate here. They can't find the workforce to be able to expand their current business or attract new business. Every single segment we're talking about, tech startups. I know Dr. Haas has been working on that for a number of years. We've had some pretty good success with startups. And as they scale up, they either sell out and leave, or they scale up their own business and relocate to a different area to expand, because they have a hard time finding workers to scale up here and grow here. So without some type of solution to the workforce, all these other things are just not going to happen. I mean, we have a unique environment here, where we have a very high net worth in our household net worth. We have so many, I call them real estate equity immigrants. They come here from other places, they sell their homes, and they can buy a home here and pay cash for it. But when you look at the data on income, they don't have that much generated income that you can source to figure out, okay, how much disposable income do they have? And how can that disposable income be leveraged somehow to be able to generate a, a workforce to fulfill all their requests? They want more dining. They want more entertainment. They want all those other things, but you need workers to be able to provide that. And if you can't find rental apartments, I mean, we just passed a accessory dwelling unit situation here in the city that will probably bring more ADUs online, and that's, that's a component of this. But until we solve the workforce housing issue, a lot of these things are just good ideas. Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. I have a question about, you know, we have a technology company here called CP Technologies who came several years ago, built a beautiful building out by the airport in the industrial park, and they were referred to us by the governor's office. I was just wondering if you had any comments about partner, partnerships with the, the state-level Office of Governor's Office, Department of Economic Development?
Sure. So can I go back and just address the mayor's comment first? So, so Mayor, I think you're right. I think one of the things that's important in this plan, and I think it connects to all of the comments that y'all have made, is that your housing challenges are your workforce development challenges, and you're not going to solve them overnight. However, one of the things that you can do to the market is signal to the market that you are trying to start to figure these out, starting to put some, lay some policy efforts to start to move the ball forward. So the idea of, for instance, of your ADU unit, that's a great policy forward. The idea that Council, Mayor Protem mentioned, that we're going to do a housing study and think about what that housing study is. Communicating to the market that you, as a council, are making efforts and pushing forward ideas as it relates to housing is super important to signaling to investors and to economic development, folks that are in the economic development space, that you're serious about trying to fix the issue. So you may not have the silver bullet around the issue yet, but talking a lot about what you're doing and how you're approaching this, and the fact that you can be a council that can be pro-housing is super important for economic development. So absolutely important. And I agree with you that the housing issues are workforce development issues. And frankly, we know that economic development really is connected to talent development. You cannot untwine the issue. And so the council members are right, it's kind of a multivariate issue, right? As we, as we work to move this, move this forward. To your question, council member, yes, I think the, the connection back to the State Department of Commerce is really important. So we've, in the plan, there's a couple of ways to do this. One is just, first and foremost, cleaning up and being on the idea about how we refer to request for information. That's kind of the inward-bound work that can happen. It's a great way to do that, doing more of that. And Arizona's like Texas, right? Where we're from, it's a place that's seeing lots of investment opportunities. You guys won't win everything, but getting into the ballpark, right? And letting people know that you're willing to play in the game is super important. It allows firsts in the sites, what we call the site selection community, to know that the city of Prescott and the Prescott community is wanting to think about economic development investment. So you may win one out of every 200, but at least people know that you're playing and want to be interested in the marketplace. The second thing I think is that, the idea of these sector partnerships. So one of the things that you'll notice is that some of the, some of the ideas that we're suggesting that you think about as investments areas for, for your community, aviation, healthcare, connections back to semiconductors, there's deep expertise here in the state of Arizona. And so as we build out those sector partnerships, having those folks at the table and having your state partners be part of those conversations will be really, really important. And so that's one of the things that we're going to work with John and team on, is as we build these out, who from the state should be part of those conversations? Where, again, you want to make, I think the question around, who are the right stakeholders to have at the table? The state is. The state is absolutely a stakeholder that you want to have at the table as we're building this out. So I hope that answers your question. Yep, please.
Councilman Gamboji.
Just one additional comment to that. So there's an evolution here too, right? So the state, a lot of those requests from private companies come through governor's offices around the country. It's good central location for them. And then they, they, they evaluate who in the state should be receiving those requests for information. So some of it is the blocking and tackling of having your, a library of assets so that you can quickly respond to those requests, right? And they come in in a pretty prescriptive format. The other piece of it is, I want to tie this to something Stephen said earlier, and Mayor, what you said, which is that then you show up differently. Then when they come, when they come to Prescott to kick the tires, what they will expect to see is they will expect to see people from the economic development world, taking them around, looking at various sites. They'll want to meet you, you all in particular, they'll want to have those conversations. What you can do to surprise them is to bring your educators along, show them what you're doing to produce a workforce that will fill the jobs that they're bringing to town. Those are the kinds of signals, when Stephen talks about sending new and different signals, those are the kind of signals that are very easy to send, because once you start making that impression, they start talking about it. And then that increases your chances, like your hit ratio should go up from having approached it differently. I'm sorry, council member.
No, I just, I wanted to make a comment, but I wanted to, I think you have one more slide, or are you done?
We're done.
We're done. It's a, it's a.
Okay. We had, we had a quote from Ronald Reagan a little earlier. I would like to use another Ronald Reagan quote, and that is, "Government is not the solution, it's the problem." We're hearing a lot of government solutions, but I think it's important to understand that the people that can solve a lot of these problems are not the people in the room right now. And it, it's, it's a free market issue that needs to be addressed. As I mentioned earlier, you did a lot of work, and there's a lot to digest here, and it's hard to do it in a PowerPoint presentation. It was a good presentation. But I think we ought to reserve some time to wrestle with this. Because at the very beginning, on page five, you, it's starting from a place of strength, and you said, "As the city Prescott begins to implement its new strategic plan, we are starting from a position of strength." And it's here where I would challenge one of your conclusions. You said, "We have trusted city leadership." And that includes a city manager. I think they are. But when you're in the community, we're pretty much, pretty close to Hatfields and McCoys without the guns. So I don't think you, it's, it's the Nirvana that you're suggesting. That's another issue, because if we're going to get consensus for solutions, we got to get both sides to see the problem from the same perspective.
You go first, then I'll go second.
Okay. And perhaps to see the solutions from the same perspective. I think sometimes it's harder to get agreement on what the problem is, but what this, what you can do as, as a group, you're, you're investing the public resources, that's what you're doing. And making sure that the public can see how you're investing those resources in infrastructure, how you're investing those resources in open spaces, how you're investing those resources in basic city services like police and fire. I think those start to send a pretty strong signal that you are willing to take the public resources and invest them such that you are building a really strong, healthy platform. And that makes it possible for people to come in and jump. And, and I think that, I think, you know, to some extent, it's about showing people, even during the budget process, here's how, you know, look, you just did it with, with your ballot initiative. Here's, here's how we're investing in public safety services, how we're investing in our infrastructure. Here's how we're protecting our water resources. That's, there's a great one. We, we did not not hear about water in a single meeting, by the way. And even just saying to folks, you know, we're, we are focused on economic development, and we know that we can do, and by the way, we're focused on being a part of the, part of the technology play. We are going to be part of the chips manufacturing play, but we're going to do it the Prescott way. We're going to do it in a way that is not, all those things, I think, start to send a signal. Maybe, maybe not everybody sings kumbaya, that's probably an unrealistic expectation, but they can start to see the alignment. And I think when people start to see the alignment, you know, actions getting into alignment, it, it builds a competence that might not otherwise be there.
I, I was just going to suggest, I don't see this as a government plan at all. I see this as a very multi-sectoral plan. So, I mean, I think when you look at the things that, that are in here, there are places for, we are actually asking the private, like, we're asking you all as a public to ask the private sector to actually show up and participate, right? There is a lot of opportunity here. There's the idea of how we want to think about this. One of the first things we're asking you to do is think about building sector partnerships. That requires engaging your educational partners, your private sector businesses, your job creators to be at the table. So when I think about economic development, I've always believed that economic development is not government-led, it is multi-sectoral-led. What we have done in this plan, I think, is outline what are some roles that you all as a community, as a, as a public government and entity and public governing body have to play? You know, economic development, a lot of times, can't just operate without, just operate fully from a private sector investments. Government has to sometimes play the role here in terms of, in terms of setting the expectation about what are our land use planning, what are our financial tools, how do we manage and think about growth? Those are things that come from you all as a governing body, because you're elected on behalf of the citizens of Prescott. So I, again, I would, I guess I would agree, disagree a little bit with you, sir, and just suggested that I think this is actually very much a kind of a multi-sectoral, multi-sector approach to economic development.
Okay, we'll have one more comment from the council, and then we've got a voting session starting in less than 20 minutes. I think we have a comment from the public too.
We do. One, yes.
So go ahead, Councilmember Rusing.
Oh, I would like to disagree with what Councilmember Gamboji said. We are the economic driver for the fourth most populated county in the state. We, I think that's a false narrative that he's talking about, maybe from a very small, narrow group of people. But in general, we have people coming here, mostly from California, investing a lot of money in our downtown. And I think that the fact that we're having you here to talk about this and developing this plan is going to give the message and hopefully will contradict that belief amongst a few, a few, a few amount of people here in town that say that we're not business-friendly and we're not economic development-friendly. So I just, I just want to correct the record here, that we are on our toes and we're not on our heels. Thank you.
Tony Hamer?
Well, thank you very much to the consultant. You know, over the last 10 years, I think we've stuttered around on economic development, and we actually have a way forward, which is being presented to us right now. And I would like to present that it's, the glass is half full. Yes, we have workforce problems. Yes, we have affordable housing problems. Those are all problems that we need to work on in combination with a decent economic development strategy. And what I see from today is, this builds on some of the previous work that people like John Haas and Jim Robb put together. So I have a lot of support for this. On I on Prescott on Saturday, we're going to have Vince Redgrave from the Economic Development Center at Yavapai College. I would urge us to incorporate Yavapai College in the way forward here, because they do have tremendous perspective in terms of the county itself. To me, this is all about choices to be made, and it's a long road. But let's start making some of those choices. Let's put the private members of our community together with us in terms of moving forward on this. I talk to a lot of new business people in town these days, and they are uniformly concerned in terms of whether they want to keep investing in Prescott. And you can go and check, and I can give you a list of people to go and check on this. We don't need negative cash flow in terms of this city. We need positive cash flow. We need a positive plan in terms of what's going on here. And we need to solve some of the workforce housing and affordability issues. But, great start. Thank you very much.
That's all, Mayor.
Ted, do you have a final comment, or no? I saw your name up there.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to show you.
Okay. Well, I want to thank Steve and Laura for all your efforts here. I know you put a lot of work into this, analyzing our city and comparing us to other cities around the country that might have similar demographics and challenges. So we have a clear strategy to work forward to. And then if we can solve some of the fundamental requirements so that we can implement that strategy, I think that's our biggest challenge right now. So again, thank you very much for your efforts. We're going to be digesting these strategic plans in more detail as we probably work on a retreat in some of those other areas. So again, thank you very much, and we'll conclude this study session and reconvene in 13 minutes for our voting meeting. Thank you.